I would say today, no other district that I'm working with in Colorado, in Washington, or certainly not in Los Angeles, can afford to and have had the ability to pay at the 75th percentile. That's a nice factor that your folks are able to see. So let's talk a little bit about compensation and what's compensation? Why is it important? So obviously, this is how we attract talent. This is something that influences our decision to stay employed with an employer. Recent SHRM, which is a Society of Human Resource Management study, cited that actually this compensation is a higher priority to people than the company's reputation. So what they make, what they take home, that's high on an employee's list. And obviously, of course, in a time like this, when prices of everything are skyrocketing. It's also a top reason for choosing an employer, staying with an employer. And all of that really just means that this is sitting on top of a triangle. The base is what your compensation strategy is to support all of the above. So factors to consider, and this is sort of the process that we went through back in the 2014 timeframe, is well, what do we want to consider? And the committee that worked on this, it was like a nine-month-long committee. I mean, I'm feeling like I was driving up here a lot to talk about this process and to evaluate different alternatives, including strategic initiatives, market factors, total compensation, organizational goals, financial constraints. All of those things are an important factor. So a compensation philosophy, then, I'd like to say it's a North Star. So it's what guides the compensation program and processes and procedures. So it's a formal statement that gives us what is our commitment. It's the why. It tells us how and what compensation elements will be covered in our philosophy. It ensures consistency across your structures. So what that means is that that philosophy is guiding paraeducators. It's guiding office, your ELP folks. It's guiding administrators. It's guiding the Unit C or the classified folks. And then finally, that serves as a foundation for defining how we're going to compensate talent so that we can achieve our business objectives. So the compensation philosophy in a nutshell here is establishing pay ranges that target the 75th percentile, the midpoint pay in the identified market for all employee groups. So pay ranges are important in this philosophy because we're looking at ranges that are competitive. We're not looking at every single position and matching it in the marketplace to make sure every single one sits at the 75th percentile. We're looking at your structure and the ranges and how employees and positions are placed within those structures. So the philosophy, you know, most people are like, look at me. What do you mean 75th percentile? What in the world does that mean? So it's a calculation, if you will, of the numbers that are collected. So we calculate the 75th percentile of the salary points that are in the data set. So in this graphic, you can see we have, if our data set points are 1, 2, 3, and 4, the 75th percentile is 3.25. So the formula is interpolating numbers within the 4 to determine the 75th percentile, if that makes sense. It's not 3. The logical mind in this would say, oh, it's 3. Well, no, the 75th percentile is actually, it's interpolating all those numbers to figure out where that is. So it's not determined by ranking the positions or the data set. Because of course, in a data set, we may have three matches for a position. We may have 10 matches for a position. And so if we only have three and we're ranking, it's very challenging. What if the third is the lowest paying in the marketplace? So we want to get as many data points as we can in our market and then based upon that data set, determine the 75th percentile. And I don't sit and do that with a stubby pencil, by the way. There's great programs that calculate that for me, thankfully. So the market study process, then, that I'm referring to is literally like this picture. The district is the pen and we're considering everything around you. So proximity, location. Where do people live that work in the district? How far do they travel? Other districts that are similar to this district in enrollment size. We are also looking at outline town, suburban, urban. Does it make sense to compare your district to a district in Colorado Springs? No. People are not driving from Colorado Springs to come work in your district. So even though a district down there may match up with its philosophy or whatnot, again, we want to take into consideration all of these factors. So the peer districts that the committee chose originally and then validated again the next time. And the second committee that got together was, there was like one person from the previous committee. The rest of it was all, so that was great because that was a great part of validating the process. But the peer districts, you can see, are up here. And I think there's 10, if memory serves me correctly. But you know, districts around you, but then also districts that are very much like yours in enrollment size. So the market study process, and this is something that I've worked with the district and worked with many districts to kind of refine. This is kind of an ideal process and your district is following it, actually. And it's served the district quite well. So it really starts at the top of that circle with the job description review and revision process. And so your job descriptions, and that's something that your HR department has done a good job of, yay, is having job descriptions that are current and reflective of what folks are actually doing. And so using those, then, is the basis of our comparison in the marketplace. So for example, you may have a position that says, let's just call it a food delivery driver. Okay? Well, that position, I'm looking at the duties, the essential job functions of that position. What are the requirements for that position? Does it require a CDL? Does it require, what type of license? How much experience does it require? And we're looking at those things and comparing them to your market peers. And I may find that in Cherry Creek, that position is performed by a non-CDL driver. Okay, well, I would have never known that if I had just looked at the job title. I would have thought, oh, that person could be delivering mail or something. I don't know. But that's, this process is taking those job descriptions and comparing them and then determining what the best matches are. So that's the second part of that circle, the external market salary survey. And that's something that you're contracting with us to do as a third-party provider. We're looking, and many of those job descriptions and pieces of information that we're using, one can't find on a district's website. So you could Cora it and receive it that way. But the districts, so many of these, we've worked with them for so long that we have a database and they send us all their job descriptions and whatever. So anyway, then we look at salary range recommendations. And I apologize, it looks like the S's like fell off. I swear it didn't look like that originally. But we then look at that market data to make salary range recommendations. So what that means is that, back to my example of the food delivery driver, and I don't even know if that's an exact title here. But if we're looking at that job and we see, oh gosh, in the marketplace, that position is now 10% higher in the marketplace at the 75th percentile, I'm going to come back to these guys and say, hey, looks like this position needs to move from range 3 to range 4 because it's shifted that much in the marketplace. So that's kind of the salary range recommendation piece, is looking at all those positions and determining where they sit in a salary range. And we do the same thing for administrators, for secretarial positions, and yes, sir.
Just as a point of clarification, so every district does this differently. There isn't like a series of job titles and descriptions from the state of Colorado that school districts pick and choose from, right? That every school district, all 10 that we compare to, have a slightly different version of what each job is. And even if the title is the same, the function could be different.
Correct.
Just as we're talking about a market analysis, that's why it's important to have trusted partners with experience who can do these in-depth analyses, right? Because what could happen is if you didn't have that experience and started looking at things, you could start to draw the wrong conclusions. And I think that the importance of today's presentation is to make sure that the public board very clearly understands why we don't go do this. Well, we hire a professional partner who's been doing this for a long time within the state of Colorado to help us with this so we can maintain our philosophy.
And that's a great point. And you know, to go back to my food service driver, the non-CDL driver in Aurora is actually driving a van of students, like a bus situation that's not a bus, that's special needs kids. So those are three different jobs, are completely different, with very similar job titles. And so that's, you know, what myself and my staff do is dig into that to figure out, oh, you know, an apple isn't necessarily an apple in this case. So the next piece, then, of this cycle is really where I turn it over to the district and the district is looking at employee compensation recommendations. So in my previous example, if we're saying, hey, we're just, we're seeing that HVAC mechanic position really needs to move from a range 13 to 15, then Russ and his staff or whatnot are going to figure out, well, what does that mean then? If the position moves to range 15, how do we move people that are in range 13 to range 15? And then the final step of the study process is in that notification to employees of the results of the study and whatnot.
And one other point of clarification, we don't ever shift people down.
Correct. And I don't, I don't know of any district, and I certainly would never recommend that right now in the marketplace that we're living in. And generally, what we find and recommend is that we hold people harmless. So positions are grandfathered into a range or people. And I have not seen any jobs go down in the last few years.
So you do this analysis for us on an annual basis. You look at jobs within the market, the local market, based on function, and where they're being paid. And then you bring that information to us. And then we course correct that to then fit in to make sure all of those positions that you recommend fit within that 75th percentile philosophy.
And really, I'm doing the analysis to determine if the positions fit within the 75th percentile, right? Because I'm collecting the data, coming up with a pay line, looking at not only do the positions with market data fit within the 75th percentile, but then also recommending if the entire pay structure and the pay line needs to be modified. And those are two separate things that work under, in some districts, under different sets or pots of money. All of that rolls into the base compensation piece of the pie. And you know, total comp is base comp plus benefits plus para contribution, plus sick leave payout, plus all of those other things. But what we're talking about, that base pay, is not only moving positions in ranges, but also the whole pay structure. Because I would suggest that pay structures across Colorado, they're going to go up by at least 3% next year. And that's, you know, they did last year too. But that's going to continue.
So Rob, I get that, like, your description of a food service driver might look different. But when you're just looking at that slide of job description, how many job descriptions can you have of a kindergarten teacher? I mean, isn't a kindergarten teacher a kindergarten teacher? Or a bus driver, a bus driver? I mean, I get that when you're doing it on a salary schedule, then you get years of experience and you get levels of education and all that. But for a job description, I just, I got stuck on that, sorry. Because it felt like those, right?
Yeah, good question. And what I would tell you is, there are some jobs that I would call benchmark jobs where generally, I can find that they have a very similar title and they have very similar duties. And even an office manager at a high school may be called a principal's secretary at a high school, may be called an admin assistant at a high school. But all of those jobs have pretty similar duties. So however, if you picked up the salary schedule at Aurora and saw admin assistant at a high school, you might not know, well, is that a counseling secretary? Is that an athletics AP secretary? What exactly is that? So that's where the job description, when we read it, we go, oh, okay. This position is scheduling and, you know, et cetera. So, but there are certainly jobs, and bus driver's a great one. Custodian is another. Principal, elementary principal, middle school, high school principals. Those are all positions that pretty much, they're what they are. The challenge comes in when you have an elementary, I'm just making this up, but an elementary school principal, I'm not making this up. In some places, it's 215 days, and in other places, it's full year. And that makes a difference in compensation, whether it's full year or 215.
I get that. I was just talking about job description. And so it just seems like for a vast majority of the people we employ, those job descriptions aren't, don't have that kind of variability because it's for teachers. But it's fine. It was just like I was trying to figure out how a kindergarten teacher would be different from a kindergarten teacher.
Well, we don't actually do it for teachers.
No, teachers aren't.
This compensation philosophy is not about teachers. This is only about classified administrator prof techs, APTs.
Okay, so not administrators, not teachers?
No, administrators, prof techs.
Oh, okay, not administrators. I missed the comma there.
And if you recall, I think you were on the board, we did this study with administrators.
No, I do remember that. That's why I was confused.
And so the teachers, true, but like the administrators and prof tech, there's a big difference potentially in a budget analyst and what that job is here as opposed to what it might be at another district. So, and the reason is, the budget analyst, for example, might have three people that they're supervising in one place, but they may not have any of that in another district. And so then that's a really different job.
I get that. It's, we started this whole thing, I thought, because of the teacher salaries. But then it morphed into...
We started it because of the teacher's salary that flipped, right? And so it was a way to support the classified staff in doing something different with them at the 75th percentile, which is, again, as we said, is unique compared to anybody else. Because it's not just the average salary, it's above that, so.
And we didn't apply this to the teacher salaries because we changed it that we applied this. Got it.
So this slide is really just showing what that data looks like for all of the positions that are surveyed in the marketplace. So we've talked about the process. We've talked about using the job descriptions. We're looking at the midpoint pay for market analysis. The reason that we look at the midpoint is that that should be reflective of an individual that's fully competent in the position, that's been in the position for more than a year, likely hasn't been in the position for 25 years. And that's kind of the whole theory behind salary ranges is that you start someone, you know, at the minimum that has lesser experience and they end at the maximum with a higher amount of experience. So the yellow arrow at the top there is kind of showing, and then the blue numbers, those are the midpoints. So this is just a lot of numbers, but this is the data for the bus driver. And you can see that the districts are listed kind of in that top rectangle on the left. Of course, every district in your market has a bus driver position. That's the data. We then, you can see, there's, we've kind of gathered up some ways to compare the information. But that third rectangle down the page is basically looking at any private and public sector information. And so we were, there is a match that's shown in that data as well. And then in the very bottom, and I don't expect you to be able to see that, but the bright green is where we're calculating that 75th percentile. So I think, if memory serves me, it's 25, I think it's 2544 or 2744. But the point is that it's calculated based on all of those numbers in the data set for the midpoint pay. And that's then how we're comparing the district. So we do suggest and recommend to the district that it uses a plus and minus 5% tolerance, if you will, to compare and determine if the position is at the market. One thing that I'm going to say at this point in time, and this is really new news to these folks, is that given what, we've just wrapped up our study of salary schedules and analysis across different districts. Because some of the districts in your market peer group changed their salary schedules in January. So it wasn't that, you know, everyone doesn't do this all at the same time. And so based on Mills passing and whatnot, there were some changes made to schedules in the last couple of months. And given that, the tolerance of 5% may need to be tightened up. That may, in the marketplace that we're living in right now, that may need to tighten up to, say, 3% if that's what we need to use as a marker. And those are the kinds of things that we have to tweak, you know, in a market like this. So questions, thoughts about that?
No, I think, to Dr. Anderson's point earlier, that if you have that plus or minus 5%, somebody that is in the range where they're overpaid, we do not deduct that amount of money. We keep them where they're at. So if they're over that 5%, we'll keep them there so we don't drop anybody's position or anybody's pay. And then we'll adjust those that are under that 5% and that negative 5 to get them where, get them as close as we can to that 75th percentile.
And we're using that 5% based upon the 75th percentile number. And that, you know, that all ties back to your salary structure and the midpoint spread from midpoint to midpoint within your structure. And that's where that number originated, just to stipulate that, I guess. So really, then, the market study process to kind of, you know, the idea behind this is attract, motivate, retain folks. The next steps after we complete that market study survey, reviewing the data, determining if a district meets that 75th percentile, and then considering the current market conditions and impact. And I have this across all of these next steps because that's something that's kind of a nuance of this year, perhaps. We're then looking at salary range changes. So we're recommending range changes based on that survey data. And then we're also recommending range changes based on internal equity if no data exists. So for example, if we have a position in your district, and let me think, there's a culinary, I think you have a culinary center, production cook position right now. I can't find that in your marketplace. Nobody has that position in your marketplace. Which, great, you have it. That's all fine and good. But I have to figure out, as your third-party consultant that doesn't know the people, that doesn't know the department, I'm going to look, and this is where the job description comes into play. I'm going to look at that job description, analyze the essential duties, responsibilities, the scope of the position, the requirements for the position, the independent judgment, decision-making of the position, et cetera. And I'm going to look at it and say, should it sit in range 3 or range 4? And if the other position that was, I'm making this up. I don't know what range it's in, but it actually might be in 3. If it's in range 3 and the other position moves up to 4, that's like it, I'm going to say, I don't have market data for this position because nobody else has this job, but the other position like it is moving up. It needs to move up as well. So that's how that internal equity piece takes place. And there are always positions in every district around here that I'm surprised by and I've never seen before. And I've seen a lot of job descriptions and I'll go, huh, that's a new one. So it is, you know, it's all right. Different combinations of duties and, you know, one department may absorb risk management and then all of a sudden, there's a budget analyst slash, you know, risk management expert. So the final step of this, then, is determining employee pay. And that's, you know, involves calculating the impact on employee pay based upon these range changes. And then our recommendations on communicating that and kind of completing the cycle. That's all I had. And so we're, if we go back to this, we're in the, kind of at the end of that first column, the market salary survey. And so at this point in time, we've just wrapped up collecting data for one group of employees. We've got about eight or nine positions where we're still trying to track down information from other districts to wrap that package up. And this is pretty consistent across your marketplace. We're involved in other projects like this. And this is, everyone's timing seems to be about similar because of course, it's about budget time, so.
Mike and then Richard?
Well, just kind of add one thing. How does this all get implemented into negotiations? Is probably the question. And I think the answer here is that this is something we've done for 10 years. And where that works is that, once we get that analysis, we look and see what's that going to cost us to put people at the 75th percentile. So we have a cost to that that we throw in there. That happens, that happens in the current school year. But then the COLA, if COLA's awarded, that's added on top of that. Plus, in the range, you might have people in the range that have steps. And so they'll move a step. If they've earned, have been here a year or two, they earn a step. That's another 2%. So there's a pretty good compensation package through the 75th percentile that really can work well for employees. The question is, is to Teresa's point, is that things are going up. Gas price is going up, cost of living is going up. And the market is jumping. And so we're going to have to take that all in consideration as we go back and negotiate.
Richard?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I think I understood what you're saying. I'm trying to see how that reconciles with our budget and our budget process because it doesn't, we don't have, we have a bottom in our budget. We don't have a bottomless budget, you know? So I'm trying to figure out how the 75th percentile and all the market analysis that you're doing and all that coincide and reconcile. How does it reconcile with our own budget? Say, for example, I don't think our budget grows every year. Or does it? Somebody correct me if I'm wrong?
A little bit. Tiny, tiny little bit.
Yeah, and at some point, you know, you're going to reach a point where, we're going to reach a point, and I think we've talked about this before, that we're going to reach a point that, wow, how much more can we afford to increase?
I think that's a great point. And if I could answer from my perspective, one of the things that we try to work with districts on is looking at the whole pot of money for compensation and figuring out these recommendations, how do they, how are they taken into consideration in that whole pot of money? And the whole pot of money includes not only meeting the 75th percentile, but the cost of steps, the cost of para, the cost of, you know, all these other things. And we hope that there's some shift in, and this is a challenging thing in a district like yours, people like to work in this district. So they stay in their position longer and longer, right? And so that costs, there's a cost at that. So that, you know, that tenure in the system becomes an important factor as well. And then I think finally, position control is a part of that equation. And so by position control, I'm meaning we, a district may not have the wherewithal, hey, we need to add another budget analyst in finance. Well, is that in the budget? How does that fit into that pot of money as well? So there's like a lot of moving parts, right?
And if you're analyzing a local market, right? You know, who's facing some of the same budget, you know, criteria or impacts that we're facing, that does help level some of that out, right? The rest of the market's not going to go screaming upwards and they're going to get more money than we are because, you know, we're similarly funded from the state. And so I do think it's something that we watch. I think position control is incredibly important, right? In regards to how are we making sure that our dollars as a district are being driven towards our schools, right? And supports for schools. I think that's something that I'm very mindful of. But I, you know, I think it was important for us to present this to you all today as we enter negotiations. So this new board, new board members and those who haven't seen this before understand the complexity and the lengths in which we go to make sure that we're fairly compensating our employees at a rate that's within the 75th percentile, plus or minus 5% within a 10-district market that surrounds the metro and has similarly sized school districts.
Kitty?
How frequently do we adjust this? I remember talking about it, I don't remember how long ago, though.
Every year. It's annually.
And by this, do you mean the philosophy or the data?
The data.
So, okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew what you were asking. And yes, we provide, so we, and one of the things that we do in the local marketplace is put together a benchmark survey annually. And so we then, though, every few years, look at all positions in a structure so that no one's left behind, right? And so that's kind of where we are with the Unit C group right now, for example.
Is that all Kitty? Okay, Lisa?
Thanks. So we saw that snapshot with the minimum and maximum in mid-range with bus driver as an example. Rob, do you have the breakdown of all of our different salary schedules and comparisons that have been given to you by Teresa that we could see? It was interesting to look at bus driver on the screen, but it'd be great to see everything and understand where we fall in these different salary schedules. And, and I guess part two would be also to get more information from Mike. If it's not, I don't want to put you out to work, but if you already have something on your computer that shows a little more information on how our benefits packages compare with other districts, that would be useful as well. Is that something we can get?
We can get that for you, absolutely.
Is there enough specificity so you know what you're asking and what you're getting? I was, because I got confused.
I mean, I think what I'm asking for is specifically, like if we look at the example that we saw before with the bus driver, if we could see that and understand what BVSD is paying, but for each of our different staffing roles, I assume that Rob was given a full report that looked like that, but for positions across the district. Is that correct?
That's not, no. So what we provided is a summary of all of that because it's loads and loads of, of information.
Whatever kind of data was handed off to Rob, if we could get that sent to the board along with more information so we can just get some clearer.
I'm playing if you're at, there's probably, I don't know how many different job descriptions there. You want that data for every job description?
I think whatever Rob has, I would love to see. I don't know that I'm going to read every single page of it, but I might. And I'd like to see what we've got and be able to flip through it.
I can't, everybody's got their, okay. If three mics are on, it starts blinking green. It's not that you're saying the right things, it's too many mics on. I, I think we should, we should discuss what it is you're looking for and, and, and we can compare it to what we have. I don't have, like those reports don't come directly to me and then I pour over them and judge or do anything. Those, those sit in HR. Those reports come to us and the analysis comes to us to ensure that we're fitting in with the 75th percentile, right? So we don't look at, we don't, and you correct me if I'm wrong, we don't go job by job and say, this job should be more, this job should be less. We've adopted, and that's why presenting today was important, the philosophy that, that we, we would be within a five-point range of, of, range of the 75th percentile for all of our positions. And so when you look at the midpoint, the beginning salary and the max salary, right? That, that it's the midpoint that we figure in at that, that range of 75th percentile. So I think we can gather the information to look at, but to use any one of those scales in isolation would then compromise the model that we use to, to ensure that we're taking all of our Unit C employees and considering them as we think about a philosophy. Not saying this year, we're going to pay this group more, this group less. It's more of an overall comprehensive approach.
I mean, I understand the 75th percentile. What, I guess what I'm saying is if the point of this information is to give the board more information on what compensation looks like leading into salary negotiations, I'd like as much information as we have available to review prior to that point. So what that data breakdown looks like, I don't think I'm, I'm saying what I need it to be. I am saying whatever information you're getting around that data breakdown, I would love for us to also be able to view.
So, so today's really about philosophy, not sharing midpoints, minimum and maximum with the board. It's about the philosophy that this board and board members have not been shared previously, right? So we can kind of talk about what information you might have. As just a reminder, as we go into negotiations, that will be staff's job to work through negotiations, you know, with the intent to continue the philosophy that we have, we have embraced and have used for the past 10 years. And then typically that will come to the board after we've gotten to a place where, where we've, we've come to terms. So, so the board's role in negotiate, the board doesn't have a role in, in these negotiations. That's done by staff. I think today's presentation was to ensure that everybody knows and understands the philosophy that we've been using, the consistency in which that's happened, and to make sure that board members were aware of that.
But Rob, I think what I'm hearing from Lisa is it's, it helps understand the philosophy, but I'm struggling a little with philosophy as applied. And that, and we don't maybe engage in negotiations if we do approve the budget. So understanding a, a level down might be helpful, is that what?
Yeah, I'm just saying, if we're talking about data that seems like it's useful and interesting and that it's focusing on different kinds of compensation scales across the state, I don't know why that's something the board wouldn't want to see. That feels like it would be pertinent to a variety of things we do, including looking at the budget and understanding more about negotiations as we go into them.
We'll get with our team and, and we'll present to you the data that we have.
Yeah, and maybe we can just get an example, Rob, of like, so we know what we're looking at as opposed to all of the data. Because then I think, so we have a common definition, that's all I'm driving for.
Let me work with Mike and we'll, and we'll get you a summary.
Okay. Other questions? Nicole?
So I have a couple of questions. When you were referencing folks that might be paid above the 5% threshold, are there measures that you take COLA, STEPS to withhold? I mean, to kind of get them back on track to be within those margins? And then my second question is, for our peer districts, are they also paying at the 75th percentile with a 5% margin? Or what are they paying at?
They're not. I'll let Teresa answer how they do that.
So, so the first part of the question, the, the positions that are over 5%. So the market kind of corrects and helps the district correct that. Because if we think about, if a position stays in the same range and it will say it's 5% over the 75th percentile. If the structure itself moves 2.5% next year, we just in effect corrected that overage. Does that make sense? So that happens, so that's kind of one piece. And then the, the second part of the question, oh yeah, so I was like totally blanked. Other districts, so other districts, I don't know of another district that pays at the 75th percentile. That's a, that's something that this district is doing on its own compared to the other districts. Most of the districts around you have adopted a at-the-market type philosophy. Many of them, and in fact, there's a couple in your marketplace that are probably 95% of the midpoint. So that's not even, you know, the midpoint's 100%. They're a little bit below that point. But most try to hit right at, at the market. And, and several districts in your market peer group do something very similar to this in, in analyzing and paying their compensation and developing their salary ranges. And, and you know, part of that is probably because honestly, market pay is, it's financially transparent. It's transparent to employees. The market, it is what it is. And it's something that we can't argue about. There's no, there, there's no perception of one position is paid more than another because of whatever other reason, it's, it's based on the market. Thanks.
Beth?
It sounds like we might get some more information about this coming down, down the line. But I guess I'm looking for maybe a little more nuance around our benefits packages and how we, how we come up with that and how they compare to our peer districts. And just a little bit more, a little bit more context there.
We can get you that information. There, there is a compensate, or there is a benefits committee that meets and they talk about all of that, what's coming down the pike and everything else. So we can get that information to you.
Thanks so much.
If you don't mind me adding to this, the one thing, because I've been involved in several benefits comparison projects very recently. Most of your dollars are going to base compensation. So, and I, I'm continually reminding these committees, this is great. We want to look at health, medical, you know, all of these things. But we're talking about a little piece of the pie here when it comes to the whole package. And the thing that's the most apparent is compensation, you know, kind of like back to that triangle of what we pay people is really important. But it's obviously important to look at the whole, but.
So would you say BVSD focuses more on compensation than the benefits compared to our peer districts?
No.
Or how, like how, how does that, what you just said, how does that compare with other districts?
So much of the benefits packages are negotiated and/or they're dictated by, if, for example, I, I just heard at a district that if you had to renegotiate your Kaiser package this year, it went up by a substantial amount. But if you didn't have to negotiate it this year, you get to pay the same. So there's those things that have really no, you know what I mean? Like you can't really control much of that sadly.
Good evening, Board. I can share with you that our benefits package, the value of our benefits package, if someone takes the district up on what's available to them is approximately $7,300. So if you're just trying to get a simple picture of, I have a job and then I have benefits, how does that look in the big picture? It's a simplistic model. Jeannie Aguilar, our, our benefits director can speak more accurately on this. And I'm sure that's who Mike will refer to to get some more detailed information.
I still get hung up on districts when you say they're similar size. It's mostly geography, right? That we're picking the districts and then we throw Littleton in because they kind of look like us socio-demographically, economically. But, I mean, we don't look like Jeffco or Denver or Adams 12 or even Aurora. They're much bigger and so I just get, so I just want to be clear on how we pick those districts because it's mostly front range districts bordered by St. Brainerd in the north. I don't think we go any farther north than St. Brain, Cooter.
It's the larger, it's the larger front range districts, right? Like we don't have Sheridan there, we don't have, you know, some of the smaller ones. So it's the larger over, like Littleton's, I think is the smallest, correct? Is that right?
Littleton or Westminster. I, it kind of varies depending it. But, you know, really, it, it is like the picture where we're drawing around your district. But I could make the case, you know, someone could say, well, why wouldn't we compare to Estes Park? Right? And, and, but I would tell you, there's, there's, you should not compare to Estes Park. Because probably if I had my, you know, my staff ran, where does everybody live that works in the district? People are driving from Cherry Creek and Littleton and whatnot.
No, I don't have a, I just, the way we describe it is just, and I think geographically makes the most sense to me, the way we look at our neighboring districts and then we throw in Littleton for the reasons we've talked about. So, so Rob, I guess what we should do is get together and figure out when we can, what'll work for you all to bring the data that's been requested back. But we don't have another board meeting until the 12th. And so let's just figure out timing and we can get back to everybody on the, on the requests that have been made at the table. Are there other, Nicole?
So as a new board member, just some clarification. We, I mean, I'm aware we are not involved in negotiations around salary schedules for our employees. Do we, what hand do we have in this conversation as a potential action item? Other than setting the budget and watching sort of how much money goes to staffing and, or FTE and how much money we have left over? But what role does the board play in an actionable way in this realm?
So ultimately, you approve the budget, right? You, you empower staff to go through, to, to go through negotiations. And then ultimately that comes to you all and then the budget is approved, right? So to the extent that the board in negotiations is, is brought into some of the, 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 the details negotiation sessions, that is not the, that is not how the district is operated.
Maybe I can be clearer. Does the board have a hand in determining the 75th percentile with the 5% margins? Or is it the district? You recommend that all?
Yep, so that comes from staff recommendation.
Okay.
And I guess Nicole, if we wanted to discuss that, we could put it as an agenda-setting item and talk about it. But as I understand it, it's been the philosophy for a long time, so.
No, it was more, we don't need to put that on the agenda. I was just asking, because to Richard's point, our budget increases increment, very small amounts. Cost of living is going up at a much higher rate. So it's just, how do we, how do we take all this into consideration was my question. And we don't need to add that to the agenda.
And, and that's why we work with Teresa, right? And as, as she talked about, you know, the market, it's tightening, right? So as she brings recommendations to us, right? She does our market analysis. She knows and understands that we, you know, our philosophy as a district is that we want to pay within the 75th percentile within the range as she's described. And so she would come out, make the recommendation to us. And for the past 10 years, that's kind of how we've gone about through this process. By having that level of predictability, it helps Bill, it helps our budget team, it helps us know and understand as we're entering into budget season, how much to set aside for, for compensation and things of that nature. And to Richard's point, and, and as the board knows, there is declining enrollment, that the budget isn't finalized till, you know, hopefully by the beginning of June. So we can act upon that. And so that's, that's been the, the way that, that we've been moving forward on this.
Richard?
Just a question here. And I believe it's been asked before as it relates to long-range planning with compensation, our budget increases. At what point do we really start looking at maybe getting below the 75th percentile?
I, I think it's a great question. And I think, I think that as we move forward, that's something that probably we're going to have to discuss in the future. Again, it's, it's something that has, has worked for us over the last, you know, several years. But it's also something that we can reanalyze and readjust if we need to. By the way, this philosophy.
Either below 75th percentile or maybe going for a milllet override, I don't know.
This philosophy is not dictated in any of our association agreements. Okay? They talk about the 75th percentile, but it doesn't have to be. So just so you know that.
And Richard, to your point, we're maxed out. So lots of moving parts for sure, especially as we look at declining enrollment and escalating cost of living and the state being constrained by constitutional limits as to what they believe they can give to us. So anyway, thank you. Are there any other questions from the, from the board?
Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a break, okay, all right. I'm going to call us back to order. We have our second presentation of our work session. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Board President Gettart. At this point, I will turn the presentation over to Rob Price, Assistant Superintendent. We're going to go walk the board through a facility assessment update. Rob?
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, President Gettart, members of the board. Tonight, we are giving you an update on what we've been working on for the last six months. As a reminder, you approved a contract to Gordian through a cooperative agreement back in August of 2021. And tonight, Chad Hancock, our service manager, and Jamie Clark, our senior project manager that have been leading this assessment, are joining us and going to provide an update. Nationally known, they're going to talk about their experience tonight. But I think a lot of people ask why a facility assessment. It's extremely critical to understand what our needs throughout all of our buildings. We have been doing this on a snapshot. So if you remember, we did this in 2012, 2013. Over the last seven or eight years, we've been working on the 2014 bond program. And now we've done a facility assessment to know what our needs are today. To be in a great place, we would understand what our needs are ongoing and we're continuing to work with that with the database that VFA just provided us. It also allows us to understand what our critical priorities are and then develop that long-term capital planning. And that's what we'll be talking about today. Before we get there, I want to just remind everyone where we've been over the last 34 years. And I, this is, I just went back to 1988 to pick out some bond programs to really show you how we fund capital improvement projects. So when we think about new construction or we think about major renovations, over the last 34 years, we've relied on bond programs. And you can kind of see going down through some of the major projects that were completed. This is really dependent on how we're funded from the state. So the majority of our funding goes into the classrooms. Therefore, we rely on bond programs to fund major improvements.
So Rob, can you just say that one more time? Because I think it's really important if people are listening to understand that the state does not support facility funding. They really rely like zero, as our CFO was saying. So districts like ours are completely dependent basically on going for bonds to keep our facilities maintained and to build new facilities.
I can't say it better than you just said it. So thank you for that. Just a reminder of what we've been able to. Just a reminder of what we've been able to accomplish in the 2014 bond. We gave a long presentation last Tuesday night, but I just want to continue to highlight what we were able to complete. We completed five new schools. As you can see up there, two and a half news, two and a half support facilities. We also addressed the number of critical needs such as air conditioning, renovating Justice High School, a large expansion on the University Hill to address a small cafeteria, put on some new roofs, some athletic improvements, et cetera. You can also see all of our students benefited from our innovation improvements at all of our schools. We improved energy efficiency by 24% across the district, installed EV charging stations. All of our students at middle schools benefited from new tracks and artificial turf fields. We installed full day K and preschool classrooms throughout all of our elementary and K eights. We installed audio enhancement through all of our schools throughout the district. And then, as you might know, 55% of our bond program was spent on deferred maintenance. That's roofs, mechanical systems, electrical systems, plumbing, floors, windows, doors, et cetera. We also discussed this at the last, last board meeting. 55% of our building improvements went into the deferred maintenance that I just spoke about. Gordian is going to highlight that tonight on how we've reduced our deferred maintenance within this bond program, a true success. 23% went into the five new schools and the two and a half support facilities. And then you can see 8% went into fixtures, a small 2% went into managing it. And then 9% went into architect fees, engineering fees, et cetera. Community oversight has been a consistent theme and that is really the reason why we have been successful from the start of our bond initiatives till now. So the engagement from our community has been phenomenal. It has shown through this bond program. As a reminder, we started with our capital improvement planning committee that put together our original master plan. There was a number of subcommittees involved through that. Then that led to the development of our citizens' bond oversight committee, which was really the financial arm to make sure that we were meeting the intent of the master plan, which then rolled right into our design advisory teams to make sure that we're meeting the promises made within the master plan at each individual school. Just real quick before I move on, we also included a number of working groups. Again, we highlighted this last week. We encouraged, or we presented to CAC or Special Education Advisory Committee. They made the decision to invest in Halcyon to rebuild that facility based on a facility assessment was done there. We also put together a working group for New Vista. That working group, based on a facility assessment, advised and recommended a new facility at New Vista. And as you might know, we have the design, we have the funding for the design, but we do not have the funding at this time for construction. And we've talked about that at length. Right now, there's about $10.7 million sitting within the bond program because we're not proceeding with the original master plan. We are short about $35 to $37 million to build a new building. And we'll talk about that in more detail. So some of the key keys to success throughout the 2014 bond program, and I'm just going to hit these at a high level. We utilized architects and contractors' experience to achieve common goals. Again, they bring a lot of experience when we're thinking about the different types of roofing systems or mechanical systems. When we came out of the gate in 2014, when the bond passed in that November, costs increased 30% in the following six months. So we went from a new construction at 240 a square foot to a little over $300 a square foot. So we had to get extremely creative on how we were going to meet the intent of the master plan. And we did that by engaging architects, engineers, commissioning agents, contractors, et cetera. We made use of different project delivery methods. We really looked at our projects and we figured out which projects were best for design bid build, which projects were best for construction manager, general contractor. And we also used for the first time some design delivery, design build delivery methods. Really, when we started thinking about it, those projects that have to be fast tracked, done in 11 weeks and we're completing, you know, somewhere between three and $6 million in that 11-week timeframe, we need those contractors on early engaged ordering materials, et cetera. And you do that through a CMGC or a design bid or a design build delivery method. Where we had more time, some flexibility from a scheduling standpoint, we went with design bid build. Spreading more work to architects and general contractors. If you remember back in 2018, we gave a lot of contractors, a lot of work, the same contractor. And we found out we were not successful. We stretched them too thin, too thin. We, they didn't have the manpower to complete the amount of work that we were asking for. Therefore, we started spreading that out even more to make sure that that didn't happen again. Timing, when we came out of the gate, again, what we were finding is a lot of districts were bidding their projects kind of in that February to April timeframe with the anticipation of starting in May. We found that when we were bidding these projects somewhere between October to December with the anticipation of start in May, our costs were considerably less. Don't, didn't always hit that and we had to make some hard decisions. If you remember, Nederlin was one that we bid late, came in considerably over budget. We made the hard decision to delay that one year. By delaying it, bidding it, I believe in October, we brought that project within budget. Other ones, Rec Field House was another key example. We bid that project three different times and the third time we finally brought it in on budget. It was all about the timing. Completing work over the summer is a challenging, so we've got to start these projects earlier. What we're finding is there's a lack of a workforce out there in the trades. So when we go in and we think we're going to do four or $5 million work in 11 weeks, we have found that we haven't been real successful in doing that. So finding ways to get into the schools earlier, working at nights when there's no kids or, or staff in the buildings has led to success. And then from a budgeting standpoint, forecasting our expenses. So prior to the bond, or I shouldn't say, after the approval of the bond, we brought on E-Builder, which is a software to help us manage our expenses, manage all of our construction documents, et cetera. They have a forecasting module that allows us to look ahead, understand what change orders are coming, allows the project managers to have the know, know abouts about what we should be expecting. So they forecast what they believe the construction expenses are going to be, their architectural and engineering, their contingency, et cetera. And again, Dr. Anderson has pointed out, we brought this thing in. All of our projects were within about 1% of the original budget. Kathy?
And you did it during a pandemic?
And we did it during a pandemic. So thank you for that. And we did it when costs escalated considerably right out of the gate. Oversight, you know, again, clearly defined responsibilities in the process. We did a really good job at that. If you remember, we had very clear guidelines for our citizens' bond oversight committee. They made recommendations that came to the board for approval. We put in very clear guidance about when we were making recommendations. So any projects over 500,000. So some good learning lessons through there, but we could not have done this without our citizens', citizens' bond oversight committee. And then just regular and frequent communication. We provided regular updates to the Board of Education. On a quarterly basis, we met with our citizens' bond oversight on a bi-monthly basis. So again, just having that feedback, clearly communicating to them over the summer what our challenges were, so there's no surprises as we're moving through. And with that, I will turn it over to Jed.
Great, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much, Rob. And thank you to the board for allowing us to be here tonight. We're excited to share the results of our assessment findings. As Rob had mentioned, my name is Chad Hancock. I'm a senior account manager with Gordian. And joined with me is Jamie Clark. So our roles differ slightly. Jamie was the technical lead on the assessment. So he was very much integrated in the boots-on-the-ground effort. And I'm much more of the strategic bridging the gap between the data and what the strategic vision is for Boulder Valley School District. In today's presentation, we're going to break it down into three sections. First, we'll give you a summary of our process and our approach to assess your facilities. Next, we'll look at your space profile. And there we'll provide a broader context of where you've been and where you've come as a result of, as Rob mentioned, recent bond efforts. And then we'll conclude with a review of the identified needs. Please interrupt at any point if you need further clarification. There will be a few definitions and facilities-related terms, so please stop me at any point. So first, to introduce more about Gordian. We are a firm that works with over 450 universities, state systems, both public-private institutions and school districts across the country. Highlighted on this chart are a few of our significant partnerships with other public school districts and even a few within the state of Colorado. On the higher ed side, we've worked with the University of Colorado Boulder, Colorado State University, University of Denver. And then more appropriate to, compared to Boulder Valley School District, Aurora. School District was another institutional group we worked with, as well as the Colorado Department of Education. As for the scope of this assessment, our team assessed 5 million gross square feet of your facilities. The effort was intended to create a comprehensive understanding of your facility conditions and to develop that long-term strategic plan of your capital investments. To accomplish this, we deployed four teams of structural, mechanical, architectural engineers, also other facility consultants to aggregate this information, to identify the remaining life of each of the systems and to assign and replace in-kind price for those systems across the school district. All of this information was uploaded into a live database that Rob and his team has direct access to. We have access to, so it's a continued partnership. That database will be integral in future planning conversations. Another key element of that database is that it is annually updated from the price catalog in which we connect to ours means directly. So further efforts to make sure this isn't just a one-and-done effort, but continual support for your capital planning needs.
So I see that we're doing a lot of the mechanical, electrical site. Was there any evaluation done as to how well the actual facilities serve the educational purposes? Because I know we're trying to do like Makerspaces and those kinds of things. Was that part of this analysis or not?
What I would call that, I would call that an educational adequacy assessment, and we have not done that. And we'll talk about that towards the end of some of the assessments that still need to be done. This is really a facility site condition assessment. They also have done an ADA assessment. That is not part of tonight's, the ADA part is not part of tonight's presentation. Just keep that in mind.
Yep, thank you, Rob. A few definitions to define, as we'll see these terms coming up in further slides in the presentation. First is asset. That's our way of referring to your buildings or site infrastructure. So when we think of the Boulder High School, that would be an asset in our terminology. A system is a group of components or equipment that rolls up into a like system type. So that would be boilers, roofs, electrical switchboards, all rolling up into their, their system category. And then requirement would be the specific need or deficiency that is identified within those systems. Also to point out, as we look at this analysis, we're focused on a 10-year planning horizon. So all of the costs we're looking at are those coming due within one year, all the way out through 10 years. So you can think of this as a 2022 through 2031 perspective of your campus's capital requirements. And before I move too far past that, one important factor to point out early on is this will all be based in today's dollars. So inflation isn't factored into the future cost. For the sake of simplicity and for future modeling efforts, we can apply inflation. But for day, we're, we're keeping it simple in today's dollars. As far as this database goes, Rob alluded to earlier efforts to maintain and create consistency around building cost modeling, ensuring that data was available for previous bond funds. This has been going on back to 2002. So this isn't a new effort that the Boulder Valley School District has endeavored on. Our focus this most recent year was to make this database more robust and more accurate in the data points that we were tracking. So we were truly trying to get the district in a place to have the most information, to make the most informed decisions going forward. As it relates to today, there are 14,000 systems that have been assessed, costed and implemented into the database, which equates to 214 requirements per building. So you can think of this as a very robust database. We're going to be staying at a high level. Data is available to be shared, I'm sure more broadly if it is of interest. But for today, we are going to be sticking to more rounded numbers of information. So as I mentioned, we're going to go into the space profile before we go into the review of the capital needs. I find it very helpful to first start with the space profile as it does set the context for the needs we'll look at further down as the age of your buildings truly is what drives the investment requirements in the years to come. There's a lot going on on this chart, so I'll walk you through it here. What we're looking at is your construction trends over time. Your construction trends for the Boulder Valley School District are highlighted in the red line across the chart. So as you see spikes, that's when space was added to your facilities. We can see further context of construction, not only within the Boulder Valley School District, but across our entire database, highlighted in the, the blue mountain towards the back of the chart. And through analysis of our database, we've been able to identify four distinct construction vintages with each having their own core characteristics as to what we would expect in terms of replacement life cycle, replacement costs, et cetera. The first of those would be the pre-war era. These are buildings built before 1951. The intent of these buildings was to be long-lasting. They were high-quality construction. A lot of these buildings are said to have good bones to them. The post-war and modern era, we grouped those two because they're very similar in characteristics. These were buildings that were built quickly, oftentimes with the intent to fill space. We have a lot of influx of students. We need to get facilities up to maintain that increase in enrollment. And then the last is the complex era. This is where we see a return to high-quality construction. With that came more expensive components within the building. So more expensive components means higher operational expenses. I know we're not getting into that element of it today, but it is a factor as we talk about those facilities. It also means the HVAC systems in those facilities cost more to replace electrical gear, et cetera. So as we look at the construction trends for the Boulder Valley School District, we see it follows our broader database at a high level. But when we really look at the specific trends, those peaks are much more prominent. So although you have similar amount of space in that post-war modern era, about 50% of your buildings were built between 1950 and it really is to 1975. There wasn't much going on in that 80s to 90s realm. And then another 36% of your campus was built in that complex era. As this relates to previous bond funds, as we were addressing deferred maintenance in previous cycles, that was mostly going towards those post-war, modern-era facilities. And so as we look at the need that's now coming due and we're looking at into the future, that's going to be need residing in that complex era. As we see some of the first life cycles coming due, also any remnants of that post-war, modern set of facilities that weren't addressed in the earlier bond efforts in the 2000s and 2010s. We can show which buildings exactly make up that group and make up those trends on the previous chart. Know it would be hard to read each one off right now, but this again goes to show the level of data and the depth of which we're tracking in this database. And you can see again on this chart that that post-war era, that 51 to the late 70s and that complex era is what makes up most of your facility's footprint. About 2.5 million total square footage in that post-war era. Another 1.7 million square feet added on in that complex post-1990 era.
Just real quick on this slide, you'll see that we have a construction year next to the school. And I just want to point out, that's originally when it was constructed. So if you'll look at Lewisville Middle School, I'll point that one out. Originally constructed in 1964, however, went through a major renovation in 2009. So you'll see that note on there. However, a school like Casey Middle School, you'll see that we rebuilt that school in 2010. That's why it's reflected over there, same way with the Columbine, for example, constructed in 2011. I just want to point out some of those nuances, just so that you catch those.
And also the construction has really changed. Like I remember when Fairview was built, it was during the energy crisis. And so we didn't have the energy-saving materials that we have now. So people wonder why it's built the way it is. And it's because back then, that's, we were building to the best that we thought back then. And I think that's, if you don't know those kind of historical changes in construction standards and, and buildings, I think it's hard to understand.
Very true. And thanks, Rob, for pointing that out. And we'll look more closely at the impact of those renovations in a few slides to come. One more way to look at your campus's construction age is by segmenting them into more age groupings. This allows us to parse out the age a little bit differently here. What this chart shows us is that 87% of your campus's facilities were built more than 20 years ago. And 61% of your facilities were built before 1980. So in large part, the work that will be required going forward will be the replacement of systems at the end of their first life cycle. And in often instances, the second and third life cycle of some of those systems because of the age we have within the construction of these facilities. And the last chart we'll look at as it relates to age is taking your campus's footprint. And the last chart we'll look at as it relates to age is taking your campuses footprint, your district's footprint. And breaking it into four buckets of age categories, each with their own requirements, assumptions that can be made about them. To do this, we look at your space that's under 10 years old. Your space that's 10 to 25 years old. Your space that's 25 to 50 years old, and your space that's over 50 years old. The very far left bar on this chart represents your construction vintages. So this would correlate with that line chart we looked at earlier on. This shows us that 52% of your space was built over 50 years ago. Which if you were to look at the legend on the right, this is what we define as the highest risk category. Because these buildings have reached the end of their life. And the potential of those buildings having major systems fail is likely. And so when we say risk, this is strictly speaking to the chances of those facilities no longer being able to house programs. 10 to 25 to 50 adds another 21% of higher risk space. Not as risky as the 50 and over, but still we're seeing some of the major HVAC, electrical roofing components. Needing their first major lifecycle addressment. We often say that the construction age is the hand you've been dealt. But we like to consider how you've played that hand. And so that's where the renovation age comes into play. And that's the chart just to the right of that. And so we can see through major renovation efforts through previous bond funds. You've essentially eliminated the campus space that exists today over 50 years old. And reduce that space 25 to 50 down to just 6%. So quite an advantageous position to be sitting in today from a risk standpoint. You've done a very admirable job to, to drive that risk down. And it's even more apparent as we compare that to our database numbers to the right. We see from a construction standpoint, the database average was younger than you in fact. But not able to renovate and reduce their age, quite like the Boulder Valley School District has been able to do. One thing to, to point out as we, as we see such a large percentage of space in any one of these four categories is to think to. What this means as that large block of space ages out into the next category. And so this ultimately means you're going into in the future have large chunks of capital requirements coming due at any given point. And so that speaks even more to the importance of these efforts to be strategic. Forward thinking in the ways we're allocating and choosing projects across the district. So with the framework of space set and an understanding of a younger campus profile now, thanks to previous renovation work. We'll move into the total 10 year need for the Boulder Valley School District. But before I do that, I'll pause if there's any questions related to space that I could clarify. Alright. So the first chart we'll look at for your 10 year identified need is looking at that number broken down into four distinct timeframes. Those timeframes are backlog. These, this is a accumulation of need that is said to be due within one year. So this would be your most urgent requirements to fund. The next bar underneath it. And the next timeframe would be timeframe A. These are requirements due within two years. So as we move further out, the urgency becomes lessened because of the, the life expectancy left in each of these requirements. That timeframe A adds another $71 million into the 10 year bucket. As we move out to timeframe B, this is where we see need that is required to be completed within five years. And then timeframe C is need to be completed within 10 years. And so this all adds up to a total 10 year need of $715 million. The distribution of timeframes would be very closely related to the age profile that we're seeing in the previous section. A younger space profile would then lead to much of your need coming due in the later half of the next 10 years. And to see such small amounts of backlog in timeframe A is quite exceptional relative to the other institutions we work with. We usually see this chart looking the opposite. We usually see a very heavy. Amount of backlog and then much more of the need being lessened out into the future. We'll continue to keep the timeframe context in the charts as we move forward, but we're going to look at the data in slightly different ways. The first way we'll look at the data on this chart is the identified needs over the next 10 years by building type. So we see the Boulder Valley High Schools on the very far left, the total 10 year need of $237 million. Broken down into those four timeframes. And then across the chart, we see the elementary schools, middle schools, the elementary slash middle schools. And then a drop off and we then come back to the middle school, high school. And then the valley, the Boulder Valley administration buildings. Of course, size is going to have an impact on the total tenure need as you have more space. You're going to have more requirements coming due within that space. What's interesting to look at within this chart, it's the urgent needs, the backlog in an A timeframe. So very little as we look across the total distribution of your total tenure need, which is a, an excellent sign of proactive deferred maintenance replacement. But when we look at the Boulder Valley Middle Schools and Elementary Middle Schools, that, that backlog, A timeframe number is, is relatively similar, evenly distributed. So although the total need changes, that very urgent work remains quite comparable between the grouping of facilities. The next way we'll look at this information is by system. So I'll refer back to an earlier definition slide when we talk about system. This is a roll-up of a group of components or equipment items. I'll go through each one and give examples of what makes up the, the individual system categories. The site is the highest total 10 year need. And site represents need outside of buildings, parking lots, athletic fields, those types of projects. HVAC system would be your cooling, heating generation, any of your HVAC distribution piping. Electrical systems, this would be your branch wiring, your distribution panels. Exterior enclosure would be your roofs, your facades, your doors, your windows. Interior construction would be your floors, walls, ceiling finishes. Equipment and furnishing would be in large part driven by some athletic needs we've captured through the assessment. Backstops signage in some of the athletic facilities. Few occasions of exterior ladders, access ladders needing to be replaced across the buildings. Fire protection would relate to your fire sprinkler systems, your fire panels and your fire alarm systems. Plumbing systems would be your, your restroom fixtures and your, your plumbing systems behind the walls. Other is a, is a category of need that's been identified as those that don't currently exist within the facilities. But the requirement would suggest they'd be installed. Examples of this could be ADA ramps that don't currently exist, but should be installed. Or any type of HVAC ventilation system that when the building was built, wasn't required to be there. But now as standards have changed, we would assign that to be something to consider as a requirement in the future. As we look at the total distribution of this 10 year need, a few things that I think are worth pointing out. HVAC systems being one of the, the higher levels of total tenure need. But because of previous bond work that's been directed towards those system specific projects. The backlog need has been eliminated completely. The only red that's there and the smallest sliver of it would be that A timeframe. So another way in which previous bond work has, has shown through in the assessment that we're completing in this last year. HVAC, no matter what's always going to be one of the higher earners because of its expense and because of its frequent lifecycle requirements. Other high backlog A timeframe would be site, electrical systems and exterior enclosures. To provide some visual examples of how a requirement comes to be. Or how this data might be interpreted in, in more actual terms. We're looking at four specific requirements identified across the school district. The first one is the Bloomfield Heights Middle School. The exterior brick wall has been identified as a backlog need, so do within the next year with an estimated cost associated with it. The Boulder Valley High School parking lot repaving is an A timeframe project. The Superior Elementary School chilled water pump replacement in the B timeframe. Lewisville Middle School boiler replacement in the A timeframe. So this allows you to see how the data actually turns into projects and how. This then in turn provides a, a better learning environment in some instances, or a more reliable learning environment in others. One of the last ways we'll roll this data up before we move to the last slide in our section. Is by looking at your total identified need by system roll-up. And so in this section, we're looking at your building envelope need as a percentage of your total 10 year need, that 715 number. That 13% building envelope would represent the exterior shell, doors, windows, roofs. The building systems would be the mechanical equipment, so plumbing, electrical HVAC. Infrastructure would be your need outside of buildings. The safety code would be any co-compliance, fire safety related project. And then the last one would be your space improvement. This would be interior shell ref- refinishes, refreshes. On this chart, we thought it would be relevant to bring in the database of other assessments we've completed to show. How you might compare across the broader spectrum of work we do. And we find you quite, quite comparable. One of the, the things we look at. Most in this is the percentage of your mechanical envelope. As it relates to the broader pie of need. And you fall right in line with where we would expect a, a group of facilities like yours to land, a little over half. Landing in that building envelope and systems categories. The remaining split between the infrastructure, safety code and space and program.
But Rob, to your point, this says safety code, code compliance and accessibility needs does not include ADA. Will we get that later or?
Am I right in saying that the ADA assessment is not included in this?
There are some ADA. There are some ADA projects that are included, but it's not all encompassing of the full analysis we did.
That was originally included and they just haven't completed their work. The, the assessment has actually been done. The data just hasn't been input into the system. So we will be doing that and we will make sure the board sees that. Yep.
And then our last slide, and then we'll turn it back to, to Rob is to look at the broader planning horizon. So we've been focused on a 10 year window. This chart expands the planning horizon to 2041. Again, a reminder, we're looking at today's dollars in, in this chart. What this chart begins to build the case for is again strategic planning. As you look over the next 10 years, the average annual requirements from a capital perspective is around $62 million. As we move out into the next decade, that 23, 2033 through 2041. That average annual requirement increases to about 76 million, so about a $13 million increase of total requirements. And again, that's not inflation factoring into that. That's the fact that as buildings age, the replacement becomes more expensive. And the number of requirements become more numerous. And so the, the efforts today to make sure that number remains where it is and doesn't grow. Due to deferral or lack of funding is, is a critical element of, of all of this capital planning conversation. So with that, I'll turn it over to, to Rob and.
Chad, thank you.
So Rob, can we look at that slide? The, that doesn't include any new buildings. That's just maintaining our current inventory.
That is correct. Yep. And I, just a reminder, there were a few buildings that were not part of this assessment. So NuVista, for example, since we had made the decision. To replace NuVista, to continue, not to continue to invest NuVista, it was not part of the assessment. Nor did we include the Ed Center as part of our assessment, or the transportation facility, or the culinary center. Knowing they were just constructed, we understand what the needs were there, just to make it clear. And that was in the board item back in August as a reminder. So again, as a reminder, we had a working group that made a recommendation to the Board of Education to replace. NuVista. We have assembled the design advisory team. That design advisory team has been working together for several months. The schematic design has been completed. And these are the exterior renderings of what NuVista will look like in the future. So the southwest elevation, if you're standing at 20th and baseline, looking to the northeast, that would be the front. Entry to the building and then that northeast elevation, if you're along Broadway. Looking to the southwest, that would be the exterior. Elevation of the building, looking across a turf field. Back to NuVista, you can see that large bump out is an auditorium that would face CU's campus. Again, we have funded the design of this. We have installed air conditioning in the existing building, the bias a few years. However, again, construction has not been funded. It appears we'll have about $10.5 million. To put towards construction, but we will still be about $35 million shy of being able to fund a new building. And again, that is assuming with inflation, I've got inflation built into that number. But we will not have enough proceeds in this bond program to build a new building for NuVista. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Glenn Segrew, our senior planner.
And, and there's also growing needs out in the eastern part of the district, particularly in Erie. This chart here shows a five-year projection for Metal Lark School. The dotted line in black represents 100% capacity for those elementary and middle programs. And also the yellow line on top represents the capacity with two portables, which would add four additional classrooms to that building. Right now, we can see at elementary, we're right at capacity at Metal Lark. And we expect that program to keep growing in the future as additional homes are built in the area. And also past homes that have been constructed have. Young children and stuff that are moving up through the system will be entering the system soon as well. So with those, with those factors, we'll see growth over the next five years. That school well exceed of its current capacity. We may even struggle a little bit with additional portables on site as well. You can see middle also will be filling up and maybe a little bit over capacity as well.
Just real quick on that Glenn, I know several board members attended a meeting with teachers out there. We will not have portables out there this summer. The idea is that we would have portables installed in the summer of 2023. That is a budget request that we will be putting through and we'll go through the budget request process. For final approval by the board in June.
Also looking again at Metal Lark in the long term, this includes development to the platted lots that haven't been built yet. In addition to some of the developable, developable lands surrounding the school within its attendance area. That, that would go to the school ultimately down the road. Even when we look at full build out in the area, we see almost twice as many kids as that school can handle. So we know in the long run, we'll need additional capacity in that area. On the right, you see. Other capacity break grounds that show even when we take into account for the fact that not all kids within the attendance area would attend their neighborhood school. We still see. Far more capacity than what that building can handle. And on top of that, a new development is just starting now called Parkdale. This is up against the, the eastern extreme of our district between baseline and Arapahoe. It'll have approximately 1,400 new homes. Those will be primarily single family detached, which will produce, which we see the most kids out of, of any other kind of housing type. Currently they're moving earth and they've told us that they'll think they'll have their first sales in the third quarter of 2022. So by September, October, they'll be moving some homes there as well. Usually developments like this take about five to 10 years to build out. But that really is heavily dependent on market conditions, how real estate market is at that time and, and what we're seeing now with construction market as well. And upon completion, we'll probably see about 350 elementary students in that development. Close to 200 middle and a little over 200 at high school. And when you look on the right, there's a chart that shows what we think. The projected enrollment coming from that development would look like in the next five years. So we'll have close to 120 student, elementary students coming out of that development alone. And we really don't have a neighboring school. That can accommodate that level of students right now. We are looking at a school site on that property, however.
So real quick. We discussed this. I think this exact slide back when we were talking about NuVista last year. So how do you pay for these kinds of improvements, capital improvements, long-term kind of investments? So cash funding, certainly the idea of a pay as you go. Save dollars up and spend them as you have them. There, in some areas, there's a, like a philosophical idea of not carrying debt. And that's why you would pay cash for something. It does require savings, so you have to set money aside over time. These are not small investments. Back to the $68 million a year, that was the average, right? And so there was one of those bars was quite a bit higher than the other. So you have to sort of. Be able to fund that, those spikes if you're doing that. Or it has to have a dedicated revenue stream, separate revenue. Or it has to have a dedicated revenue stream, separate revenue stream. And then this is the idea of a current payment for future use. So when you're talking about building a school like NuVista, we've already paid for the design of it, but with the design, you're talking 40 million, 45 million, depending on how big it is. So to save up that money or spend those current dollars when you're really going to get multiple decades of use out of it. That's again, part of that philosophical idea of cash funding, pay as you go. Bonded debt, so this is voter authorized debt financing. That is the flip side of the philosophical thought on this is that you're having future payments for that future use. So when you're talking about 30 years worth of debt for a building that'll last 30 years, there's a payment being made by the residents 30 years out when they will be using the building. There's certainly costs for debt issuance and the interest over time over that 30-year debt. Long-term payments for long-term assets, specified mill levy to fund payments for the principal and interest. So this is where you have a dedicated revenue stream to pay that basically a mortgage payment for capital construction. And then certificates of participation are another debt structure that exist. It's a lease purchase agreement. It is paid by general operating fund resources. Typically, there's a slightly higher interest rate than you'll see on bonded debt. About 25 to 50 basis points or a quarter to a half a percent higher interest rate. You can repay certificates of participation if you take those out. You can pay them off with future voter authorized debt. Although there is no guarantee that that debt authorization will pass whenever that request goes out to the voters. There's not really any difference in the timeline that it takes to do bonded debt or certificates of participation. It's, you know, three to five months to put together all the paperwork and requirements for that. With the caveat being that you can do certificates of participation at any point in time. Whereas bonded debt, you have to have that voter authorization. So that's usually happening in that, you know, December to say, March timeframe. So that's all I have on how do you pay for all this stuff?
Bill, thank you.
Bill? Well, do any of our bonds roll off anytime soon?
I'll have to look that up and give you a schedule on that. I don't remember.
I'm guessing not, though. It's always an easier ask if you can say, can we extend these bonds and not have to increase your taxes? But I don't think we're in that situation.
Right, I think we, the last three rounds that we did, we kind of put them out, that 30 years. So there's nothing really rolling off coming up soon.
All right, just kind of wrapping this up. So next steps, I think tonight we've presented what our short list of immediate needs are from a facility standpoint. So we've talked a lot about NuVista. Some more work needs to be done around the timing of Parkdale. So Glenn and I will be working closely on really defining and determining when that school needs to be constructed to accommodate the enrollment growth in that area, right? So some more work needs to be done around that. Facility assessment identified needs, I want to thank Gordy and they've done a tremendous job over the last six months going through our facilities, really highlighting what our needs are. We need to get our hands on the ADA assessment to really understand that, get it incorporated. And then understand where those dollars shake out. Critical programmatic identified needs. So we've spent a lot of time talking about career and technical education, some items that align to the strategic plan. We've talked about community school concept. Some other ideas that we've spent a lot of time at this board level talking about. So identifying those costing those ideas out and then figuring out again where those shake out. So and then really starting to have the discussion with you about what our next steps are and how do we want to proceed? If we decide to go in 2022 for a bond and go to our voters, community engagement has been extremely important and community engagement at this time will not be as authentic. And it's not due to what we've done. We've been through the Marshall fires, we've been through a pandemic. This community's been a lot, our time has been consumed elsewhere. I think we need, we have to think about that and discuss that amongst ourselves. A community survey would be extremely important to figure out where our community is at, find out what they will support, what they will value as we're moving forward. And then starting to think about what is our timeline for long needs assessment? So this is really around our facility needs, but Kathy brought up a great point from our programmatic standpoint, right? What do we want our buildings to look like? Do we want natural light in all of our classrooms? Thinking that from a programmatic assessment, what we call an educational adequacy assessment still needs to be done. That's when we bring in an architect to help us go through, figure out what those needs are, identify those needs, help us cost those needs out. Furniture fixtures and equipment, a lot of our buildings got new furniture, but not all of our buildings. And we're finding that to be huge for students to have options as they're going into classrooms, to have different types of seating available to them. Athletic assessment, sustainability assessment, I don't have on here information technology assessment as we're thinking about our fiber network. Think about our data closets that need to be upgraded as they continue through. Those are all items that have not been assessed, but that's to me, long-term. They've done a good job of explaining what our critical items are. And when we're thinking about our critical items, those are items that could impact the learning environment. That's something that we have to be aware of. I would ask you two is what if we don't address these items that are in year one or year two from your professional opinion, then what happens?
Yeah. What will happen is that that need will then become a continual item on your deferred maintenance list. And the longer it is deferred, the more at risk it is to fail. And then to Rob's point, displacement, the disruption of that program becomes all more reality. And so the urgency really does exist to fund them as they come due, rather than to let continual deferral increase the risk of program displacement. And then just from a practicality operational standpoint, that money bites into your operating budget as you prolong deficient assets longer and longer. And so there's a two-pronged savings, both from a risk standpoint and also from a daily operation of the facility standpoint.
And so board members, as we think about these next steps, as a reminder that during our board prioritization meeting in February, it was the kind of the consensus opinion of the board to move this presentation up from April to today. The facility assessment update with the, what was, was shared in the meeting with the idea that that if, if we did decide after we started working through these next steps, that, that it was the desire to fund these projects through a bond in 2022, that you would have more time to be able to consider that and move that forward. So what Rob and the team have presented today is not only just this information, but next steps that would continue to keep us on a pace that would leave that option open for the board and for the district to potentially move forward with a, with a bond in November of 2022.
Just a quick question, do we have an amount that we would be thinking about for a bond in 2022 yet?
You know, we don't.
Do you have a range?
It would be smaller than the 2014 bond. You know, I think, you know, the, the idea here is, is to really look at what our immediate needs are. So they presented year one and year two, that was around $90 million. If we determine that Parkdale is needed within this bond package, you know, you could probably assume that's somewhere in that 40 to 45 million dollars, NuVista 35 to 40. You know, in my mind, it's probably 300 million or less.
That gives us a range, so I was just trying.
It's somewhere in that range, but you know, there's a lot of, again, when we're talking about those critical programmatic needs, we've got really to find those, get those costed out and prioritize those.
So I think what we would be looking for from the board today is, is a nod of yes, continue on this path. Not asking for a vote at this point in time. But we need, we need to give Rob and our team direction to move at the pace we would need to pace to keep going for a body bond in consideration. And so we would need some direction from the board tonight is, you know, from what we heard in prioritization to where we see, we, we see our needs being. To keep that in play, we would need to kind of get our team moving, moving in that direction. And so that's kind of the direction we're looking for from the board this evening. Not asking you to vote or say, yes, go for it. There's still lots of information that needs to be collected and considered as, as Rob's talk with Parkdale and other things. But we're, we've kind of course corrected our, our approach to be able to keep, put that in consideration with the idea then, Rob, that in August that, that, that we would be ready to bring that forward with a yes or no to move forward with a bond if, if, if that was the desire of the board.
Board, we'd have to bring it back probably in April at one point, in May. And then in August, you would have to adopt the master plan in order to get it on a November ballot. So that would be the timing. So we probably have three check-ins from now until August if we were going to move forward in 2022.
Lisa and then Kitty?
If we go for a bond in 2022 and it gets approved, when could we start construction on NuVista and approximately how long would it take to complete?
Great question. Design would be completed, so let's assume that we would be starting in 2023. I've got this schedule built out, I believe we would have it open in 2025, so August of '25.
Okay, I guess I thought that's what you were going to say. It's hard for me to imagine any reason we would want to push that off any further, given the state of the current building. So I hope we, we continue down this path.
Kitty? I have a couple of questions on the, talking about the safety evaluation and fire safety. Does that include the ability to withstand a wildfire as well as safety if a fire breaks out inside the building?
I would, for one, our schools are constructed much differently than a lot of the residential homes that burned down in the wildfire.
Yeah, they're not framed.
However, we are just as much risk at times from a wildfire. So, you know, we're spending a lot of time doing assessments of the exterior of our facilities, making sure that we don't have a lot of vegetation up close to the buildings, that type of stuff. But we do have a lot of different types of roofing systems that are, could become flammable. Some of our schools are wood frame structures.
Which ones?
I could get you a list.
Oh, Gold Hill is, yeah, okay. It's okay, I know, it's the older ones.
But no, what they have assessed would not prevent any of our buildings. They're still at risk.
But it sounds like it's on the radar. That's good. With the timeframe, this is the second question, for building NuVista, change if we did a certificate of participation versus a bond?
Only, so I would say no if we decide to go for a bond in, in November of '22. If we put it off, then certificates of participation could speed that process up.
Other board members? Nicole?
So one thing that's chronically looming over my head in these conversations is the enrollment conditions that we're experiencing with declining enrollment on the west side of our district and increasing enrollment on the east side of our district. Centaurus has had a boom of enrollment in the past couple of years. Our Boulder-based high schools have had a decrease in enrollment. And so part of, part of my wondering is how our discussions around enrollment, open enrollment overlay with these discussions about building new facilities. In addition to every new facility we build has long-term costs associated with them. Not to mention all the other facilities we have. So are we going to get those pieces of information around enrollment and how we're thinking about our enrollment planning? And does that, that timeline, I feel like is a year or two years out. And so how does that work with or conflict with the timeline we're discussing with a potential bond and financing new facilities?
Yeah. So one, we have a work session coming up with the board on April 19th to talk about declining enrollment. So we'll be presenting some information on where we're seeing that decline, but where we're also seeing the growth as Glenn presented tonight. We are taking that into account. So as you're thinking about the growth in Erie for the need for new school, there's not a whole lot of options out there on what to do other than to build a new school. And that's the information we'll be presenting and again, what Glenn presented tonight. NuVista is, to me, not about enrollment. We have all made the decision as we've worked through working groups, et cetera, it's about the program. Without NuVista, you don't have that program in Boulder Valley School District. So from the direction that we've received, this was not about building a 350 student high school. This was more about, we value the program that NuVista delivers for those students that are at that school. So I guess I would look, anything to add to that?
No, no, I think that's right. And, and again, as, as Rob, Glenn and the team study Parkdale, right? And look at how soon is that community going to be scaled up? I think that will impact the final, right? Recommendation that we would make. And to Rob's point, the ability, that there is growing need out there. For those of you that joined me for our teacher roundtable out there to talk to those, talk to those teachers, they're feeling it. So, but I do think, Nicole, that we do have to consider our enrollment and declining enrollment, especially as we think potentially about some of the critical needs that are identified two years, five years, 10 years out, right? And I think there could be some impacts on the recommendation we make, that, that could coincide with some of those discussions.
Richard?
My question was answered, that was concerning the, when Parkdale would be ready to, when we would include Parkdale, do we include, we're going to be able to include Parkdale in the, if we decide for 2022 bond, will that be included in there?
Some more work needs to be done. To me, we're, you know, right now, we're a little bit worried about what's going on in our economical climate. You know, are they going to continue to build like they're building? So we want to, you know, we're looking for some commitments from the builders to make sure they're on the same timeline that we've projected at this point. So that's why I say we've got to do a little bit more work. Any kind of a recession would limit the amount of houses that are going in out there, which then limits our enrollment. So we want to make sure we get it right, so we'll continue to study that. And we'll bring it to the board as we have more information.
A quick question for Glenn, did you include the, the apartment buildings that are being built over on Arapahoe and 287 on, on the Nine Mile Corner?
Yes, that's included in, in all of the projections. I have a master list of all the developments that I keep updated periodically and that, that's included in the numbers that you see.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Glenn, does, do we have enough, assuming this preschool bill is going to fly through without any modifications, which I'm hoping isn't the case, do we have sufficient space in all our schools for increased preschool numbers?
You know, as, you know, we added preschool to the schools in the last bond. But I think what we're finding in preschool, my understanding of it is, is more of a locational issue. So we've got needs in some schools that are higher than the rooms we built and we've got needs in other schools that are lower. So that balance and finding the right fit at the right school, I think is something that would need to be looked at.
And that's something, Rob, you'd be looking at as we go forward? Because I think we found that that's one of the small solutions to our declining enrollment is to be able to have students enroll in our preschools and then stay with us through their K-12. And then can you talk a little about CTE? I mean, would this bond give us any ability to expand our CTE opportunities or some of those critical needs that I think we're facing for some of our students?
Yeah, I would say we've been working closely with Dr. Huffman, runs our Boulder Tech program. They're visioning out CTE, I know they've just presented. I know they've just presented their Grad Plus plan at the last work session. So we will be having those discussions about what does the campus up here, just east of the Ed Center, look like? What would career and technical education look like throughout all of our schools? When you think about middle schools, high schools, how do we weave those into the buildings versus just having a standalone program? There's definitely a need and now we're just working on identifying what those needs are.
So, okay, Richard?
Will we be including the other possibilities in the East County as it relates to different configurations of bilingual opportunities, et cetera?
Yeah, I think that that those things that are related to what Rob spoke to about, you know, bilingual pathways, things aligned to Grad Plus, community schools, would be things that we would assess in our critical programmatic, programmatic identified needs, right? And brought forward for consideration as we think about what that could look like and what we would need for that to look like. I think that before we get too far down that path, getting Capital Improvement Planning Committee and letting the team start to assess some of these other pieces. But I think things that are aligned within our strategic plan and those items that we've mentioned specifically would be in consideration.
Anything else, Richard? Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, I forgot to say before, but the rest of this presentation seems like the way the bond was handled in terms of the thoughtfulness and the careful planning that went into it have really set us up for success. So I just want to say thank you to everybody involved with that work. This was, it was great to see the way that that's been used and the position we're in now.
Anyone else? So I just have one question, Rob, you said that our community engagement wouldn't be authentic. That bothered me. I think it might not be as extensive, but I think it would still be authentic.
Well, it would be authentic. I want to say we really have a few months to work on this from a community engagement standpoint, knowing a lot of families leave over the summertime, et cetera. So, you know, in my mind, we've got to get out applications, we got to find out who's interested to have that collaborative process. But if we think back to the 2014 bond program, that was an almost an 18-month community engagement process with 40 to 50 different community members involved. We will, this will be a light touch, I just want to make sure everybody is understanding of that, we'll engage. But it will not be the level that we did in the 2014 bond program. We just don't have the time. And knowing those milestones of getting something to you in May and then really defining it by August. I mean, we're talking a matter of a few months here to make all of that happen. I just want to make sure that is clear. So I, you know, as we've talked about hitting our critical needs, understanding what our facility needs are from New Vista and Parkdale, understanding some of these key programmatic issues that align with the strategic plan, making this a little bit more simple than what the 2014 bond program will be, will be key as we're moving forward.
My pushback on that a little is that we aren't going for what we did back then. So it doesn't necessitate the same kind of community engagement and process and timing because we've identified some of the needs, we do need community engagement, I think it will be authentic. It just doesn't need to be as long and extensive as it was for a $600 million bond, is that fair?
That is fair, yeah, and well said. I just, that is one piece that has always been important to us. I just want to make sure it's clear, we're working on a condensed time frame.
Yeah, and to Lisa's point, that's why we've been successful is because of our community engagement, so. Board members, is anyone feeling like we should not continue down this path? I mean, without a vote, just a thumbs up or a thumbs, not even that, I'm not seeing anybody like.
A stop, a clear, a clear stop from anyone?
Like a no way Jose kind of thing? Is that clear enough for Rob and Rob?
Crystal.
And Bill? And Glenn, thank you all. Any other questions, board members? So I think with that, we don't see each other at this table again until April 12th, is that right? So I wish everyone a restful spring vacation and thank you for all the hard work that we've had. And I'll see you all next month.